I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of May 11th, 2017, to order at 6:00 PM and ask Clerk Simski for roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here, Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero is absent. Manager May?
Here.
Attorney Zemanak?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome. We'll move on the agenda, open forum. I do have one request. This is an opportunity, if anybody else has any item they want to talk to the board about that's not on the agenda, now's the time to see chief. Seeing none, we'll just have the one that was presented to me, Glenn Gabriel, want to comment on proposed new totter trash containers. So Glenn, come on up and...
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and village staff. I'll try to keep this brief. Manager May is already outlining the operational drivers behind the proposed policy to use these large roll-on or roll-off totter containers for curbside trash pickup. Your experience is in civil administration. In marketing, there's a concept called CTQ, Critical to Quality. That is, what is the customer value and not you necessarily as the service provider. And while there are obvious exceptions on the current containers being used in terms of capacity and weight and so on, the various hardware store variety are pretty well-serving most of the residents right now, those that don't abuse it. And quite a few of the residents may find the 96-gallon units rather bulky, space-consuming, unneeded, and unwanted. There's also a tendency in marketing that capacity will tend to be utilized. And so the first thought is, well, there's no need to fill up this very large unit. However, that inviting very large unit could create some diversion from what's being recycled now, as well as if I've got the space to throw it out, I'll throw it out. I'm concerned also beyond that, that a fair number of the 96-gallon rolling recycling bins may join the ones, the recycling bins, sorry, the trash bins may join the recycling units that are already sitting at people's garage sides and so forth, increasing the fleet. This is not an aesthetic concept. It's not plausible that at least some of these new 96-gallon large containers may end up sitting at curbside for quite some time, or find their way onto 63rd Street or somewhere else because some people are just simply not going to use them. Then another question is, that seems to be unanswered at this point, what about those persons who set out their existing containers, which would not be recycled unless they're metal under the new program? If they put those out, or if they put out bags, will Waste Management decline to pick up the trash then in that case? And so my recommendation overall is that the safety and operational efficiency of the new automated pickup system is clear, but I would recommend that the board consider provision be made for considerably smaller, either 32-gallon or possibly 45-gallon containers. And that's the summation of my comments.
Thank you. And I think manager, for the residents can have an option on the smaller one if they requested it.
Well, when you talked about all these, you know, issues thoroughly, kind of at a public works committee level before the contract was approved, but the, we will be issuing every household or residential customer that uses this kind of pickup, a 96-gallon tote to match the recycling one. And the, you know, as far as getting rid of the old cans, they just, Waste Management said you just have to mark them as trash, and they'll take them if they're not recyclable. The same with the large items, one large item is still available each way, and so if that's a bag or not, but you can always sticker it. The, what was the first question? I forgot.
Can they request a smaller tote?
Everyone will be issued one, and they had to physically place an order and do that, and short of a survey, they can replace it after they've used it for, I think the minimum period was a month. If we have feedback, people that want or need the other side after using it that period of time, there'll be a swap one time for a 64, not as small as was suggested here, is the only other available option, and that'll only be done once at no cost. Then the, you know, to go back and forth, you know, just keeps running up the costs, and that'll have to be absorbed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. You go ahead.
Waste Management, didn't they also mention that the old cans could be used for yard waste if properly labeled, for the yard waste pickup also? Right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think they're willing to work with us. All right, any, seeing no other open forum at this time, kind of our opportunity to get sworn back in, we're going to do the oath of office, and Clerk Simski, who's in her 20th year now, is going to be the one sworn in first. So Clerk Simski, if you could please go out in front, and she's asked her good friend, Darien City Clerk Joanne Rigona, to do the honors.
You have to come to this block.
You have to stand on your mugs. It's like TV.
I only know that because Glenn gave me this.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Virginia Simski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Wait a minute. We have another mine in there that... I brought mine.
You don't want to do the duties, is that what you're saying?
Laws of DuPage County.
Just include, and the laws of DuPage County.
And the laws of DuPage County.
And the laws of DuPage County.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of village clerk.
Of village clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
We'll get, later on during reports, we'll have an opportunity for those newly appointed individuals will have the time to talk. So the next one, of course, Jenny's going to give me the oath of office. Jenny.
I state your name.
I, Ronald J. Gunther.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the Office of Mayor to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Mayor to the best of my ability, so help me God. So help me God.
Want to do them all together, or?
No.
Are you going to make me do it by myself? Okay.
And now, we're going to...
I'll just sit here?
No.
We're going to ask the three trustees, who are newly re-elected, to come up one at a time.
She's one of the swearing for you.
And Trustee Addington will be the first to take the oath of office.
Yes, have to stand on your mugs. I, raise your right hand. I.
I, James Addington.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
And the laws of DuPage County.
And the laws of DuPage County.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
The duties of Office of Trustee.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God. You didn't have that said to him, did you?
Yeah, I did. Bruce?
The next trustee is trustee Bruce Barker.
You have your arm raised. I state your name.
I, Bruce Barker.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will...
Go ahead.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
The best of my abilities, so help me God.
And the third trustee is Harold Berry III. We did this by age, it looks like.
Where you should write. I state your name.
I, Harold Berry III.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
The Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
The duties of Office of Trustee.
The best of my ability, so help me God.
The best of my ability, so help me God. Excuse me.
We want to thank Clerk Simski. A little different atmosphere than four years ago, but that's fine. We're just going to keep moving along with our business. I'm going to ask Clerk Simski now to take a roll call of the new village board.
Did it change, Bob?
Well, it says...
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here, Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
And Trustee Nero is absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. Moving on, reports. The first one is, of course, the mayor's, and I do want to take this opportunity to thank my family and all the residents who supported not only myself, but this entire board in the four years that we've been elected. We had a lot of accomplishments, stormwater, the roadwork, the strategic plan, all of them required a lot of resident input. Got a great community that our residents volunteer, always step up if there's something to do. This last four years, I'm proud of the fact that we've reorganized the staff, we've got everybody basically housed here at the village hall. I started out mentioning I'd like to have the team kind of approach, and I'm very proud that that's occurred. I see that staff is, I've been honored to be the mayor with the staff we have. They're doing a great job, and I'm proud of them. The, I'm looking forward to the 100-year anniversary. We've already got volunteers on that committee. It's four years from 2021 will be the anniversary, so we're making a lot of plans for that. And I'm also proud this last year that we have the two districts in the downtown and 63rd Street, and there's some very encouraging movement in those areas. So in the next several years, looking forward to seeing those redeveloped. And lastly, the four years for me has gone by extremely fast. The, from my family end, my daughter got married, my youngest granddaughter's the one yelling, but my daughter got married, we've had three grandkids, I retired, and we lost both our mothers in that four-year period, so it's been a very busy four years. So, but again, I'm honored to be here, representing the community as mayor, and I thank everyone for their support. Thank you. I move on to Clerk Simski.
I, like you, first of all, I need to thank my family. They put up with a lot with me, with what I feel about the village and how much time I spend, and everybody knows I love the village, and I love to be here. I want to thank my staff sitting there, Kathy and Alicia, they're both deputy clerks for me, and they're wonderful. They make my job a pleasure to come into every day, so thank you very much, and thank you for staying today. And of course, a special thank you to Joanne, who came up to swear me and not swear at me. So I appreciate that. You're a good friend. We do a lot together and spend a lot of time at conferences together. The residents that came out and voted, bless your hearts, it was not an exciting election when not one section of the election at all, not the Park District, the library, or the village had any opposition, so, or the school board. So it was a little hard to get up, but enough came out that I felt comfortable, didn't you, Mayor?
Yes.
And lastly, the staff as a whole in this town is wonderful. We have the best public works, the best police, the best fire, we have the best of everything. So there's not enough kind words I can say about the village and the staff. And it's just a pleasure to work here every day, and it's a pleasure to work with this board. I love all you guys. We all get along, we might not always agree, but we all walk out smiling and laughing and talking at the end of the meeting, and I think that's the main thing. We never get mad at each other. We just have our discussions, and we let...
I'm always mad at you guys.
And fight some of these ordinances, but he makes it interesting, and that is what our residents need, is somebody like Harold, too, that is always opinionated and states his facts. So, anyway, thank you. It is a pleasure, and thank you all, you wives and spouses and children and grandchildren, for putting up with all of us in these meetings. You're all wonderful. We love you all. Thanks.
Thank you. One thing I did fail, that I did have in this little note card, is that what's made it enjoyable for me is, we've had a very, and Jenny mentioned it, strong board. There's been no conflicts. It's easier to come to these meetings if you're, you can agree to disagree at times, and you listen to everybody's viewpoint. So I really appreciate the board that I've had all four years. So thank you.
The one person I'm about to thank is our wonderful attorney sitting there. He's not a member of staff, but in a way he kind of is, because we all depend on him so much. I didn't thank the manager, because he is a member of staff, but I thank the world of you, too. So, but you two are very special.
So we'll move on to trustees, and we'll go with the order that they were sworn in. Trustee Addington?
Well, thank you. Again, I'll reiterate the same comments that our mayor and the clerk said. It's been a fun four years coming back after I took some time off to do other things. This is a fun board, it's a fun town. After almost 50 years, actually, it's probably, am I here more than 50 years now? No, 49. After 49 years, I'm a Westmont person. Even though I wasn't born here, as several that have gone before us, I'm part of this town, and I love it dearly, and I love the things that I do within it, and we've got some good things coming, we've got some challenges coming. Again, this last series of raindrops pointed out again that we still have some areas that need some work, and we're committed to do that. But to my family and everyone else, and to the staff, I can only say thank you for letting me continue to do this. I love this town, and we're just going to keep trying to make it as good as we can and always better.
Thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. First of all, I wanted to thank my family, my wife Moira, who puts up with my good ideas and my bad ideas. All her support for the four years, and nothing but encouragement, and that makes it easy for me to, you know, do what I want to do here in the community. My daughter Ainsley, and my daughter Brianna, and my grandson Dylan out there, and my son-in-law John Sopchek, who has served Westmont for a bit of time, and then Zach Chorney, future son-in-law. But they all support me, and they all like this community and support this community, and allow me to do what I want to do, especially my wife Moira, all the time that I'm away from her, and the things that, you know, she lets me put, again, Westmont first, and I thank you for that. I also wanted to say that, you know, the joy that I get out of this, you know, it's not a whopping paycheck or anything, it's the idea that we get involved in our community, and I would encourage everybody to do something for their community, for their church, for their school, for their park district. Get involved, and it makes your life so much fuller, and we all know that, you know, as volunteers are serving the community, but I would encourage people to do that. I found the staff here to be, you know, outstanding, you know, with this restructuring that we did, but the staff has been nothing but supportive, and, you know, it always was very exciting to me to think that as a resident and as a board member, I could ask a question and I would get an answer. You might not always agree with the answer or like the answer, but you would get an answer. So they took your questions and your need for information seriously, and I respect that and appreciate that. I'm proud of the staff, I'm proud of the work that the volunteers in the group that Westmont first, the initiatives that they've tried to do in the community. I enjoy going to that meeting. Everybody there loves this village and tries to improve this village, so I'm proud of that work. Community development, I feel that we've made some great progress in community development. Those folks, again, work hard and, you know, move that effort forward. So I want to say it's been very rewarding to be part of that, and I thank you for that opportunity. And then lastly, the spirit of cooperation between the fellow board members here has been really exceptional, and it's made it easy to come here. I haven't had a meeting yet that I didn't want to go, or, you know, it's very rewarding to come in and do our work and go home, and that's because of the, you know, the people in this room that sit up here, and, you know, sometimes we do make the hard decisions or the unpopular decisions, and the thought and care that goes into that. I've seen it in each and every one of us, so I'm grateful for that. So thank you for the opportunity. I'll do everything I can for the next four years, and hopefully my family will continue to support me. Thank you very much.
Well, trustee Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please excuse my voice tonight. I lost it on the most important night, as they say. I, again, want to thank my family, I thank God, and thank all the support of all of the residents, and a couple of gentlemen that aren't with us anymore. Bob Scott was very helpful to me early on, and Ron Searle had taken me under his wing and gave me a lot of guidance when I originally was elected, and I want to make sure and thank them, because they were very helpful as we started out in this venture. As the mayor pointed out, it went by really fast, it seems like, and I was recalling, I couldn't remember everybody who ran against us. I couldn't come up with the six people the other day that ran the last time, and much like the mayor, I, two days after I was sworn in last time, I lost my brother. And one of the most difficult things, much like life, it's a roller coaster. So you come off this huge high of a dream come true to be a trustee for the Village of Westmont, and then suffer the greatest loss that I have. At that point, I really saw a lot of staff and trustee, I really saw what the people were all about. I'll never forget Bruce and Moira coming to my home shortly thereafter with baked goods, and really seeing what the love for Westmont and for the people that were surrounding that, and that's something I'll never forget for both of you. And so we, first couple of months here, I was probably had a little bit of a loss as that went on, and hopefully became focused after that, and really enjoy the fact that the mayor's leadership gives everybody the opportunity to know that they could move forward in this organization. We've seen that with Manager May, and I talked to a lot of the staff, I talked to a lot of the public works, a lot of the different walks of life, and everyone is really happy with the leadership. Everyone is happy to come to work now, and that's a great accomplishment from the leadership and to Manager May and his staff. So again, thank you to everyone, and excuse my voice tonight.
That's right. Well, thank you. Now, we'll move on to the ones that didn't have to rerun. Trustee Guzzo?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you all. It has been a pleasure the last two years. It's great to see us moving in a great direction. I am a lifer here in town, and it's just amazing to see the changes that we've seen over the 50-plus years that I've been here, and staff, residents, everyone, we all work together. We don't always get along, but we always seem to come up to a mutual agreement, and I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity as well to sit here. It's been great, and just thank you to everybody, and congratulations to you all again. It's been nice to work with you all.
Thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been personally asked by my letter carrier to announce that the letter carriers in Westmont are having a food drive Saturday, and if you would all put perish, non-perishable donations in a bag by your mailbox, they will pick them up and they will deliver them to their local food bank. So please don't forget the needy right now, and our letter carriers are out there not only delivering mail, but also going to pick up your non-perishable donations. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So moving on the agenda...
You know, I'll get beat up by the Lions Club if I don't say one thing.
Did I already give him the chance?
Yeah, you did.
Go ahead.
You'll get beat up by the Lions Club, too.
I know. Trustee Addington?
Just mentioned, in two weeks will be the red, white, and barbecue down at Ty Warner Park. Plans are really moving along. We now have almost 50 amateurs cooking on Saturday, and 61 teams that are cooking between Saturday and Sunday in the pro competition. So there's $20,000 in cash prizes for them, but on top of that, there's entertainment, there is a whole bunch of food vendors, and a lot of fun. Myths and Legends will be there, they are again brewing the Lion's Pride beer, which they did last year, so please, hopefully the weather will hold and not what we had yesterday, but we'll have a good time that weekend, and everybody come out and enjoy.
Thank you.
No, I won't get fined.
Moving on, items removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member like an item removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
First this evening, on the consent agenda are village board minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held April 27, 2017. Next is finance ordinance number one, $1,454,957.71. Next are purchase orders. First purchase order is Don Morris Architect, $21,155.32, represents the building, permit reviews and inspections in the building division. Next is Clark Environmental, $79,520. That is the mosquito abatement for 2017. That's a cumulative amount. This is an open purchase order that we would be paying off of as the services are rendered. Next purchase order, actually, next two purchase orders are the Village of Addison, both for dispatch services. The first one is $106,845.84, represents the services between February 28th, which was the cut-over date when we switched to Addison, through April 30th, 2017, which was the end of the... switched to Addison, through April 30th, 2017, which was the end of the fiscal year. The next purchase order is $640,370. And this also is an open purchase order to encumber that amount for the entire next fiscal year and payments will be made off of that. So you won't see individual payments on the consent agenda. It'll be in the finance ordinance from now on. Next purchase order, Action Target Incorporated. There are three purchase orders for Action Target. Two of them appear on the consent agenda, the other one's in the finance ordinance. Together, they represent a project that is for the rebuilding and the redesign of the indoor shooting range. The total for the project, for reference, is $78,703, but it's separated into three purchase orders. So on the consent agenda, the first purchase order is $46,861.80. The second purchase order is $23,430.90. And then separately, there's that $7,810 purchase order for the balance, representing different parts of the project. That brings the total of purchase orders on the consent agenda to $918,183,086. And therefore, the total of purchase orders in finance ordinance number one is $2373,141.57. Next, we have three proclamations. First proclamation is National Police Week. Board to consider a proclamation declaring the week of May 11th through the 17th, 2017 is National Police Week and May 15th, 2017 is Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the village of Westmont. Next is National EMS Week. Board to consider a motion approving a proclamation honoring Westmont's Emergency Medical Services Team and proclaiming the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017 is National EMS Week in Westmont. Third is board, is Public Works Week. Board to consider a proclamation to declare May 21st through the 27th, 2017 as National Public Works Week in the village of Westmont. Mayor, that concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as presenting?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made in second. On the question. I just have a comment. The police shooting range is specifically from funds that can only be used for...
It's from a cooperative arrangement we have with the DEA and these are proceeds that are collected from that and have to be spent in a certain way. And this is a great best use for that.
Yes. Any additional comments, question? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. We do not have any unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. Do you want to take...
You can keep the order.
Keep the order? Okay. A. 5937 Cumner Road, Platte subdivision. Board to consider an ordinance approving a request from Greenscape Homes LLC for preliminary and final platte subdivision to split one lot into two in the R3 Single Family Detached Resident District. And Director Ziegler will give us some additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a straightforward request. We're going, we're requesting preliminary and final approval for these two lots over at the corner of 60th and Cumner. The previous home has previously been demolished and one lot is currently under construction and then the next one will be built following this approval. Planning and zoning commission gave us a unanimous positive recommendation in April and Greenscape has been working through final engineering and is now complete and we recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Barry.
Whoever she put down. So, any comments, questions?
Yes, I have a question. Greenscape, have they been installing sprinklers in these homes? I know they've built a number of homes.
All the ones this year have had sprinklers.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody from the audience? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. B. 408 to 414 North Cass Avenue, the final platte of subdivision. Board to consider an ordinance approving a final platte of subdivision request from Westmont Gardens Townhomes in the R4 General Residence District. Director Ziegler?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a straightforward final platte of subdivision. This will allow the applicant to start building his townhome project, which he's been working on for the past couple of years. We have met with neighbors in the field and discussed some of the existing site constraints, topography and some trees that we're looking to protect during construction. Otherwise, though, this is a straightforward request and we recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Parker.
Motion made in second. Approve. On the question, anybody?
I have a quick question. Any idea when we're going to start construction?
He's looking to start as soon as we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah, we're waiting on some approvals from the sanitary district, but otherwise we're good, we're pretty much good to go.
And then on the final, Jill, is this not limited to over 55? This is going to be an open
Right.
community? Is the final resolution of that?
Yep.
Very good.
Anybody from the public?
I have a comment, question. And again, when, this is started three years ago?
Approximately.
And they've been, there've been extensions and...
Yes, we've had extensions because there were significant engineering issues on site. As you remember, the county health department had flooded pretty significantly and so there was just a lot of attention given to this project.
Can, I know they're here. Can, just out of curiosity, the average price of these townhomes? I think the first one was like quite high and you brought them down. Do you know what it would be?
Yes.
You can come up to the podium.
The original concept was just going to be a five-story mid-rise project, all brick block, flex core. Those were going to be in the $550,000 range. The row townhomes, which are a little easier to build, I think a little more practical. We can't do as many of them, so less density. But they'll come in in the 340 to 350 range and they're about 2,200 square feet. So we think it's a very aggressive price for the area and should do very, very well.
Any other questions?
We're very anxious to get started, so.
Thank you. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Well, motion passes. So, look. New business C. 138 North Cass Variety Store. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit request from Jazz Variety and Fashion to allow the operation of a retail company in the B1 Limited Business District. Director Ziegler?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new retail request at 138 North Cass for a variety store. This isn't allowed use. There's sufficient parking. I'm available for any questions and Mary, the business owner, is available if you have any questions as well.
I think before we get a motion, we'll allow her maybe to...
Motion to approve, Barry.
Motion to approve. Okay. Second?
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve. Now, if you'd like to comment on it?
Good afternoon to each and every one of you all. It's a pleasure for you to allow me to come this afternoon. I would like to open up a variety store, fashion variety store, of selling different items, religious items, clothes and accessory jewelry so far.
Any questions? Have you been in business? Do you have a shop now? Do you have a store now?
No, I don't.
This is a, this is a first-time venture for you?
Yes.
And then are you, do you live locally?
Yes.
In Westmont?
No. My son lived in Westmont. I used to live in Westmont and I moved out of the house over in Donna Grove, but I'm looking for a house back in Westmont.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the, the items that you're going to sell, are those new items? Are they?
Yeah, they're new. Everything is new.
So nothing in the store would be resale?
No. All new.
Okay. Is there, do we have protection for that? I mean, I don't want a resale shop in the downtown.
We have restrictions against thrift stores and such. Those are not an allowable use, either permitted or special use in the B1 Business District. As far as resale shops, I can't recall if they're special use. So we have protections.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody from the audience have a question?
Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
We'll look forward to seeing you.
Amen. Thank you.
And I see you sitting next to Larry Forsberg. That's a good guy to sit next to.
Yeah.
New business D. Award a bid proposal. 2017 Suffield Gardens Water Main Improvements. The board to consider ordinance awarding the bid proposal from Swallow Construction for the Suffield Gardens Water Main Improvement Project and authorize a contract consistent with the bidding documents. And I see Noriel is going to give some more information.
Thank you, Mayor. The village of Westmont accepted bid proposal from five contractors for the, for this project. The low bidder is Swallow Construction with a low bid of $40,999.99, which is approximately 18% below the engineer's estimate. Staff recommends approval. Any questions?
It seems like it's consistent. Now, all our, the bids we've been lighting out on any sort of project are way lower than the estimate.
They seem to be very aggressive this year. A lot of bidders, a lot of interest and good prices so far.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Little?
Motion made in second to approve. On the question.
I have one.
Trustee Addington?
We've done business with them before.
Swallow Construction, yes.
Okay, so we know them.
They've done a number of water main projects for us in the past.
Good. Just thank you to you guys, Noriel and everyone that's been working on this. It's been a long time coming, so this is going to be really good for the village long-term. This is a, this is a good, good deal for us. So, thank you.
And this will be looked in, right?
That is correct.
Yeah. So it really is going to be good, yeah. Thank you.
Any additional, anybody from the audience? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E. Water Quality Improvement Project, DuPage County, an intergovernmental agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County for reimbursement of water quality improvements as part of proposed FDHQ Stormwater Management Project. And Noriel's going to give us some additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. The, we are currently in phase two engineering design for the proposed stormwater improvements over at the fire department property, which is also known as the 6101 South Cass. The water quality improvements that are included as part of this project was qualified for grant funding through the county water quality program. So upon completion of the project with the IGA, the village will be reimbursed $90,000 for the water quality portion of the project. We recommend, recommend, approval.
A motion?
Motion to approve, Little. Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question.
Just a little bit of clarification. It's, when we say water quality, it's the stormwater quality. So it's a modification of the detention basin and realignment, additional volume, combining two problem basins into one, coupled with the benefits of the water quality improvement, the discharge.
That's kind of what DuPage County's looking for too, right?
Correct. We all are.
We all are. Okay. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
New business F. Clarton Hills, Westmont, intergovernmental agreement for North Richmond Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Clarton Hills for road improvements to North Richmond Avenue. I guess manager May is going to take this one.
Yeah. This is similar to the, well, it's identical. Other than the location, it's identical to the agreement we did with either last year or the year before. We're for South Richmond, which is our boundary with Clarton Hills. So this is an intergovernmental agreement to do the improvement of the full right-of-way and each respective community paying, you know, their portion. Clarton Hills takes the lead in, you know, the design and construction and we reimburse.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Parker.
Motion made in second. On the question. No questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Anybody have, trustee Barker?
Actually, two things. Storm drain stenciling is going to be this weekend on Saturday, 8 to 11 o'clock. I'm assuming we're going to meet out here in front of village hall and go through the neighborhoods and stencil storm drains where we can. And then part of Westmont First, we did this last year and it was very well received for our police department. Next week is Police Week and we want to, again, through Westmont First, offer blue ribbons for people to pick up at various locations to put on there. We have special permission to put those on parkway trees. The ribbons themselves are no cost. They can be picked up at the Chamber Office, Westmont Paint, and we're working on the library in the park district, but I want to say that they'll agree to that. I just haven't seen that email yet. So those will be available probably Monday morning and we want to support our officers in that way. And then also with the police department, I had an opportunity to go to an alumni association event that was held on Monday. The Alumni Association had a diversity group in called Unity Partnership and this was brought to us a while back by Chief Mohern. And the new chief brought this group into the police department, phenomenal presentation. And they have all kinds of support from various departments, police departments and sheriff department. And I'm looking forward to having a long relationship with them here at Westmont. Very, sure, the chief would agree, both, actually both chiefs are here. They would agree that it's very worthwhile, but extraordinary presentation for the times that we're in here. So I wanted to...
Well, to follow up on that, I know where everybody's anxious to adjourn and celebrate the newly elected officials, but I'm going to ask Chief Gunther to tell us about what activities are going on with the police department. There's, I think there's a couple of them that we have not mentioned today.
That's Stephen Earl's one.
Thank you, Mayor. I've talked about this a lot, so it's fresh in my mind. So this Saturday is the Westmont Police Department Open House, starting with the auction first and the open house second. So the auction will start the viewing at 9:00 AM. Auction, the active participation where you can start bidding will start at 9:30. That'll go to 10:30 and then we'll take a quick half-hour break and then we'll start at the open house at 11:00. Plenty of things to do. We'll have hot dogs from, and food from the Lions Club. We have our new bounce house. We have tours going off on the quarter after of the hour, so 11:15, 12:15 through 3:15, 2:15. And we're really looking forward to, it's going to be perfect weather. Let's not go on this, that it holds, but 75 and sunny. So please come out. I'd love to see everybody. We've been advertising like crazy, so we expect a really big crowd. And then next Friday is the Cop on a Rooftop event at both of our Dunkin' Donuts locations. I will be on the roof at the 63rd Street location starting at 5:00 in the morning, which is way earlier than I like to wake up. But I will be there for Special Olympics. And then I think Deputy Chief Grueen, either he will be on the roof on Ogden or he's assigning somebody to be on the roof. Either way, there'll be somebody up there too.
He's going to be posing next to his poster.
Yeah, he is. He's, he's, so he's got the commercials, he's got both commercials, he's got the, you know, the banner pictures and then he's also on a billboard apparently on I-80. So somewhere near Joliet, you can see Deputy Chief Grueen on a big billboard. We're feverishly trying to send somebody down there to take a picture. So, so those are the two, two biggest events in the next week and a half and hope to see everybody out.
Are you borrowing the fire department's bounce house?
No, we have a, we have a brand-new competitive bounce house.
[laughing]
Along with the fire department's bounce house.
Swallow.
We'll see. We'll put them next to each other at, during street fair. We'll see who's got the bigger bounce house. But the fire department was gracious enough to actually inflate it for us for the first time because they knew what they were doing and inspected it and it passed all, all of us. time, because they knew what they were doing, and inspected it, and passed all, all busters. So we're looking forward to having that out, and the fire department will also be there. It's their building, too, so they'll have representation during the open house as well, so hope to see you all out.
Thank you. Any, now that we've started this, everybody...
There is, there is one thing...
Trustee Barry.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if maybe Larry, Larry Forsberg would want to recognize, or maybe yourself, the Tuesday scholarships, if we maybe want to mention how well that went, and how impressive that was.
I'll ask Chamber Director Larry Forsberg to comment on that, the two organizations in town that got together to offer scholarships.
Well, for the third consecutive year this past Tuesday, we had a joint Rotary and Westmont Chamber scholarship luncheon. We had 65 people in attendance, and 24 students that were recognized. Just a phenomenal group of students. I talked to a couple of people after the luncheon, and I'm just amazed at, everyone's amazed at how much these students are accomplishing, how engaged they are in the community, and listening to their goals, you know, going forward to the schools that they're going to, and the career goals that they have. Very impressive. That night, there was also a Lions scholarship program. So Tuesday was a very busy day for scholarships in the community of Westmont, and I think we should all be very proud of what our school systems are accomplishing, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Addington.
I don't think anybody said, because we're not going to meet for two more weeks.
Happy Mother's Day.
Happy Mother's Day.
We're all going to...
For all the moms out there, Happy Mother's Day. We, we love you very much.
Very good. Any other? If not, I'll, we do not have executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Guzzo. Second, Little.
Motion made in second to adjourn, and as soon as we do adjourn, there is coffee and cake in the community room. Four years ago, I called it the unfinished room. It is now finished, so a roll call and adjourning, please. Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Again, I want to thank everybody, and this meeting is adjourned.